Adequate notice of this special meeting has been provided to the public by written notice dated September 2nd, 2019. The meeting notice has been one posted on bulletin boards located in each school building and the Board of Education office. Two, communicated to at least one of the boards designated newspapers, and three filed with the Borough Clerk of Palisades Park. Roll call please.
Thomas Matarazzo.
Here.
Stephanie Jane. Yes. Jason Kemp. Rebecca Lake. John Madison.
Yeah.
Neil Min. Here. Barnet Fisk.
Yes.
Jeffrey Wood.
Here.
Timothy Dain.
Here.
Dr. Cirillo.
Here.
Mr. Choi.
Here.
Thank you. Okay, this meeting has been called solely for the purpose of the referendum which we are going to be presenting in November for a vote. And at this point, I'd like to ask Dr. Cirillo to please explain the two that he has before him.
Sure. What was shared with the board members this evening for a vote on the November 5th, 2019 election day would be, one, a resolution approving a project consisting of a local share of $23,180,700. This project, which we can refer to as the smaller of the two, is strictly renovations of all three of our schools. This is also going to include mandates as required by the New Jersey Department of Education. Such mandates are ADA compliance, elevators that may not exist in the schools, in addition to any other door handles and/or ramps that are so desperately needed for any project to be approved. The project in total, and I spoke of the general share, or excuse me, the local share, but the project in total is $38,634,500. As we mentioned many a times, this Palisades Park School District is eligible for 40%. Forty percent of the number of renovations from the state of New Jersey is $15,453,800. So, very simply, when you subtract the $15,453,800 from your $38,634,500, the community of Palisades Park would be responsible for $23,180,700 if the small project was so approved by the board this evening. The big project is everything that has been identified. The big project includes expansions, both at the junior, senior high school and at Limburg Elementary School. At the junior, senior high school, there would be a two-story expansion off of the second-floor corridor going onto the field, which would allow us to address some of the overcrowdedness as it's coming through our schools. In addition, all renovations would be satisfied with the big project. At Limburg Elementary School, a three-story addition is being proposed off of, I would call it, I guess, the, would it be the south? Mr. Spalazzo? I think it is the south.
Where the miles are.
That's correct.
Okay, the south.
By the modular units are, the south portion of Limburg Elementary School is where a three-story addition, brand-new, potentially consisting of upwards of 12 new classrooms, is being proposed, in addition to a state-of-the-art gymnasium, cafeteria, multipurpose room, whatso, and also includes any and all renovations here at the Early Childhood Center. The big project is a total of $61,139,346. Again, please be reminded, any new construction is not eligible for reimbursement from the state. The state share would be $17,236,632, which would leave the community of Palisades Park responsible for $43,91,580.
It's $43,902.
I'm sorry. Thank you, Mr. Choi. I apologize. So, the community of Palisades Park ultimately has two potential proposals here. And for the board, it's not a recommendation of mine to consider. The board would have to so move on either proceeding with total expansion and renovation at $43,902,714, or total renovation and only require ADA compliance for $23,180,700.
And the third option?
And the third option is you put two questions on the ballot and you offer both to see how the voters would react. The third option would be, we offer the smaller renovation plus ADA, you offer the larger, or you offer both. The only issue with offering both could be a confusion to the community and/or voters. I don't want to influence decisions. I don't want to split voters. I so desperately want to remedy our deficiencies as we enter into a new school year. The buildings look pretty damn good, and I'm very excited. But I still know that even as early as this morning, I got another text message of another lead. That's the day before school starts. We continue to just address them. Today was at Limburg Elementary School in a different area that we were not aware of prior.
Okay, thank you very much. I'd like to suspend the agenda to allow for audience participation first before we come up with a resolution and vote. So, if you don't mind, why don't we pull it on suspending? Okay, I'd like to make a motion that we suspend. Second on that? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, we'll now open to audience participation. Please.
Joseph Spalazzo, he's talking about sensible voting. My only thing is, if we split the vote, we'd run the chance of making a no vote. Only thing on the road, either way, we have it, other than the no vote.
Thank you. Anyone else? Yes, ma'am?
Mary Papo, Poco Co., Glen Avenue. I would think we should just put the one question after extension and just work for the best. If we put two, I think it's gonna be confusing, and when you put two plate like this and me, people choose. You only have one, you just get one.
Okay.
So, I think one and it's the bigger problem here is the population. We're going, not gonna stop. So, I think, I think it's number, just one question.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Yes, sir?
저기 대략적인 개요만 좀 말씀해 주세요. 옥천 말씀하시면.
He asked for his name and address before.
네, 성함하고 주소를 먼저.
네, 저415 삼라 번영원입니다.
They mean Mr. Horn, Mark, and he lives on 415th Street.
질문이 있습니다.
예, 지금 교육청께서 설명하시는 거, 그걸 좀 간략하게 한국말로 좀 해달라고 부탁드렸습니다.
지금 두 안이 있습니다. 그래서 개요 공유를 하는 것은 지금 2,300만.
2,300, 2,318만 불 정도 주민, 주민한테 부담이 되는 거죠? 리노베이션 할 경우에만.
그걸 이제 새로, 새로 짓는 건물이 들어서게 되면 초등학교의 Limburg School에 3층짜리 건물이 추가가 되고요. 플랫폼이 12개가 들어난다고 하죠. 그리고 주인이나 캐피친이랑도 더 늘어날 거고요. 그래서 그렇게 되면은 전부 다 합쳐서 4,300만.
잠깐 쉬겠습니다. 제가 앞으로 나가야지.
일단 4,300만 9,2714불이 되거나 전체를 다 하시면 아니면은 그냥 지금 무너진 거. 그 다음에 저희가 엘리베이터도 없고 나라에서 이렇게 놓을 나비나 뭐 이런 것 저런 거다 고쳐하고 하는 게 떨어진 게 있어요. 그러니까 그거를 그대로 스테이트 법을 따라서 고치게 되면은 2,300만. 네, 2,300만.
그 주민 부담이 그렇다 이거죠?
그렇습니다.
그러면 주 정부에서 40%까지 보장 받을 수 있는 거를 제외한 나머지 금액이 2,300만 불이라는 얘기죠? 예, 그런, 예, 그렇게 따지면은 결국은 주민들이 부담하는 게 2,300만 불이면은 월연 주민들이 순수하게 페이하는 비용이 얼만지 혹시 SBA에 나온 거 있을까?
I'll ask him to adjust that. Would you address the tax burden for individual household on both the small number and the big number?
Sure. Was it distributed? Do we have them in circulation?
We don't have any of that yet.
Okay. So, what is gonna be public in a few minutes? Very simply is, on a home assessed, I believe, at $490,000, the average tax impact, if we did a small project, would be somewhere in the neighborhood of about $200.
Per year?
Per year. So, if the house is estimated double that, your taxes would be twice as much clearer. On the bigger project of potentially a $45 million loan, the tax, again, impact, same formula, 400, I believe it's $489,000, would be about $372 a year on, again, $489,000. So, if the home was assessed at twice that amount, the taxes would be 372 times 2.
그러니까 지금 말씀을 드릴게요. 집의 value가 가진 대신 집의 지금 SBA, 여기 그 assessed value라는 게 있죠, 타운에서. 평가해 준게 489,000불이면 작은 프라이저트로 가시면 일 년에 200불이 올라간다고 합니다.
2,300만 불의 경우에?
예, 200불이 올라가고요. 만약에 우리가 4,300만 불로 가면 집의 value가 489,000달러면 372불이 올라간다고 합니다. 일 년에 372불이 되거나 또는 일 년에 200불이 되거나 그렇게 된다고 합니다.
제가 7월 달에 교육위원회 공문을 우리 유권자위에서 설문조사를 해갖고 보냈을 때요. 그때에 1,200만 불 주민들이 부담하는 걸 기준으로 해서 우리 타운 택스 디파트먼트에 문의를 했습니다. 하니까 489,000불 기준 220불까지 연 페이를 할수 있다. 그렇게 SBA에서 나왔는데 그러면 지금 여기에서 계산한 금액은 그것보다 엄청 더 높은 금액인데 어떻게 그 정도밖에 안 나오는지 어디에 문의해서 어떻게 결과를 얻었는지 그걸 여쭙고 싶네요.
Okay, he said he asked to the town's office if we, the town people needs to raise up the money for 12 million dollars, then someone from the town's office told him that estimate tax raise will be about $220 per year. But then he's thinking that this actual amount is almost a double from 12 million, and how come it is $200? And he wants to find out, like, where do we get this estimate?
So, I will not speak for the townspeople or whomever he spoke to. That's not ever gonna be my place, I hope. But the reality becomes, this was prepared by Mr. Steve Wilcox, who is the auditing firm for both the Borough of Palisades Park and the School Board of Education. Stephanie, what I just prepared in my quick mathematics, on a home assessed at approximately $980,000, which maybe some of the homes are worth that much. Multiplying the 372 times 2 and dividing by 12 months a year, I'm at approximately $62 a month. And I know that's a lot of money, but I think about $2 a day.
Which, which going with the lower?
This would be the bigger one.
The bigger one.
And again, I'm not trying to sell which one. I'm just, I don't know where the 12 million conversation came from. I can't speak to that.
Sure.
This was prepared by Mr. Wilcox. Or at least someone in his office.
Alright, thank you.
Thank you.
지금 교육청장 말씀이요. 지금 어디, 그러니까 저희 타운도 오디하고 우리 All of Education도 오디하는 컴퍼니가 있는데요. 이분들이 만약에 누가 가진 집이 98만 불 value면 지금 전체를 다갈때 얼마가 되느냐 계산을 한게 지금 한 달에 62불 정도 이제 내셔야 되는 걸로 이렇게 나왔다고 해요. 가격 98만 불. 값이 98만 불짜리를 가지고 계시면 그런 분들이 우리가 더큰 픽처로, 더큰 플랜으로 갈 때에 한 달에 62불 정도 부담하셔야 된다. 그게 근데 그 지금 1,200만 불 정도 해서 220불 내야 된다는 거는 어디서 받으신 건지는 잘 모르겠다고.
근데 타운에서는 누가 그거를 넘버를 주셨습니까?
타운 택스 디파트먼트에서 줬습니다. 분명히 문의했고요. 그래서 그렇게 나왔어요. 그러니까 그건 정확하다고 저는 보고 공문서를 작성했고. 그두 번째, 예, 지금 그 교육위원님들 많이 한국분들도 계시지만은 사실 우리 타운에는 저것은 또 저희 상대는 시니어들이 많이 살고 있습니다. 그분들은 대부분이 두 플렉스 주택에 거주를 하고 있는데 그분들이 이제 그 은퇴하셔가지고 이렇게 살고 있거든요. 그럼 그분들이 금년 같은 경우에도 우리市长님 여기와 계시지만은 택스가 한万3,400불 정도 올라갈 거다 그렇게 말씀하셨어요. 실제로 이번에 택스 bill 나온 걸 보면 600불 이상 올라갔었거든요. 실제 타운에서 얘기한 거하고 또 현실하고 또 이렇게 차이가 납니다. 왜냐? 집 배를 때문에 그렇겠지요?
예, 근데 그거는 저희 referendum하고는 상관이 없는 거죠.
아 물론이죠. 그러나 나중에 택스가 나올 땐 거기다 포함돼서 같이 나오겠지요? 그래서.
그럼 제가 조금 통역해도 될까요?
예, 그래서 나중에는 의약회사하세요. 그래서 말씀드리는 것은 지금 현재 이案을 교육위원님들이 아무리 노력해서 하셔도 100% 부결됩니다, 이거. 절대로 통과 안 됩니다. 그래서 유권자위에서 여러 사람들의 설문을 들어가지고.
잠깐, 잠깐요. 잠깐만요.
들어가지고.
100불, 100불, you said 100% reject from the town, town people and registered voters?
우연무이원님, 발언 중입니다. 발언 중이니까 조금만 자제해 주세요. 발언 중입니다.
잠시만요. Stop, stop. Please translate for enough, let's calm down a little bit, okay? Everybody just calm down.
Yeah.
And please translate for now.
Alright, he said, for the town's tax, he heard that it's gonna be around 300 something dollars, but actually, he got final tax amount up to $600 in his bill. So, he was built up all this skepticism about what's been told and what's gonna be actually built. So, he feels that whatever we're telling him here, it must be completely different at the end. So, I think he's worrying about his experience, previous experience for the town's tax and that what if we're not speaking of the truthful amount?
Well, we can, if you can let me know, that we can't control with the town. I don't know.
Right.
I can only say about with the board of ed, what it's going to cost for the renovations and/or new. So, we can't answer, if you can tell them for what the town.
그러니까 지금 이제 All of Education에서는 우리도 그 그러니까 타운과 우리를 한꺼번에 다 오디하는 분이 지금 주신 어마운드이기 때문에 우리는 이분이 주신 게 맞다고 하고 지금 우리가 이걸 갖고 있는 거죠. 사실 actually 어떻게 될지는 우리도 모르는 거지만 저희는 타운의 택스 오피스에서 얘기한 게 아니라 이거는 오디스를 제대로 하시는 그 회사가 얘기를 하는 거기 때문에 여기에는 굉장히 더 트러스트할 수 있는 그 value가 있다고 생각하는 거예요.
Stephanie, so I just had one thing. This was all prepared by the professionals who submitted it all to the State Department of Education. We do not determine the numbers or the cost values. This is done by professionals. For us to comply and be eligible for 40% reimbursement, we would have to comply.
Right, okay. 그러니까 이거는 지금 교육청장님 말씀이 여기에 있는 이 숫자들은 지금 스테이트, New Jersey 스테이트 government하고 저희가 working하면서 일어나는 건오기 때문에 지금 타운에서 뭐라고 말했다가 바뀌고 이런 것이 아니고요. 이거는 우리가 정확하게 벌써 스테이트에 다 올린 거고, New Jersey State Government가 컨트롤하는 거기 때문에 저희가 이걸 더 어떻게 뭐 여기다 붙이고 어떻게 더 높여가게 하고 할 수가 있는 것이 아니라고 합니다.
그럼 애초에 의견은 여기 교육위원님들이 내신 거 아닙니까? 그렇죠?
그러니까 저희가 의견을 내는 거보다도요. 지금 New Jersey State Government에서 40%를 우리에게 줄수 있기 때문에 어느 타운이든지 지금 이렇게 리노베이션이나 이렇게 fix하고 하는 게 필요한 데는 지금 다 알아서 지금 한번 assessment를 해봐라 그래서 우리가 하게 된 겁니다. 그리고 정말로 여기를 가서 assessment을 해보니까 it's horrible situation. 그러니까 이걸 안할수 없는 입장이 된 거죠. 그리고 New Jersey State에서도 학교가 이렇게 컨디션이 안 좋고 나쁘면 아이들이 어떻게 가서 공부를 하겠냐 그렇게 하니까 저희들도 이 referendum을 가서 지금이 접시다라고 결정을 하게 된 것입니다.
Okay. Yes, sir?
Just in answering his question, is it, he complaining about this last tax bill that we received for this year?
Yeah, because there wasn't any.
Okay. We had, the town might have told him that our tax was gonna be at a certain level, okay, but then it was much higher. And that is because suburban counties' tax was not figured into the county tax, and suburban county tax on top of what yet. So, that's from the county. That's nothing to do with the town. That's nothing to do with the school.
네, okay, thank you. 지금 저분 말씀이요. 타운에서 우리한테 원래 드리기를 했던 택스에는 문제가 없었답니다. 근데 멀긴 타운이가 택스를 굉장히 많이 올렸기 때문에 그게 거기 추가가 되신 거래요. 그러니까 타운에서 만약에 오해 지금 택스 bill 받으신 거가 처음에 얘기했던 거보다 많이 올라간 이유는 또 멀긴 타운이의 타운이 택스가 올라가서 그렇게 되게 합쳐진 거라고 그렇게 설명을 하십니다.
Okay. 우리 주민들 입장에서는요, 주민들이 부담할 수 있는 그러한 그액에 대해서 협의를 하고 그러길 원합니다. 그런데 이렇게 몇천만 불 되는 프로젝트를 가지고 서로 얘기한다는 거 자체가 저희 그 은퇴한 주민들로서는 굉장히 부담스럽고 힘듭니다. 그러니까 물론 뭐주 정부에서 이렇게 지원을 해서 이런 프로젝트를 한다고 그러면은 하긴 하겠지만은 현재 이 금액 가지고는 제가 만났던 어느 사람도 도우는 사람 하나도 없었습니다. 그러니까 설령 referendum를 11월 6일, 5일날 가더라도 저희들은 그 서로 시간과 노력, 그 다음에 모든 것이 낭비될 것 같습니다. 그러니까 합리적으로 주민들이 납득할 수 있는 금액으로 해서 우선 그 방법부터 하나하나 처리하는 것이 방법이 아닌가 이렇게 지난번에도 제안했고 앞으로도 그런 방향으로 우리 교육위원님들이 수고해줬으면 하는 그런 발언입니다. 이상입니다. 통역해 주세요.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
He's saying that most Korean owners for the houses, many of them are retired citizens. And keep on going, the tax burden is really hurting some. So, he was just hoping that, you know, there might be some difference in the amount of what they have to take care.
Meaning the seniors?
Yeah, I mean the former owners.
We can't control that.
Right, so, but he's, he's just feeling, he's just expressing his feelings that it's, it's, it's keep on.
Well, for the non-Korean people too, as well, you know, we're retired, some of us, you know, we got the mark too.
He feels that, like, we came up with that idea, like, ourselves.
Sure, it's a good idea. Wish, for me, I wish we did. Yes, ma'am?
Oh, go ahead, Ms. Tans.
Maureen Tans, 414 Glen Avenue, Dr. Cirillo just had a question about the wording. If I understood the way you explained it, they're both wording the same, but one will not include expansion.
That's correct.
They both say they do.
The first paragraph is 50%.
So, so there is expansion required in the smaller of the two proposals. So, we would have to word it that the required expansions at Limburg especially with regard to ADA compliance. No elevator, this whole project from the state will be denied.
Could that be worded differently to reflect ADA compliance when it seems like?
You can look at that.
Sure, it would be considered.
But I think keeping it in this general context is advisable, just in case we need some flexibility as far as the use of the funds when we move forward with the project. There's gonna be many pickups along the process. Keeping the flexibility with the language, I think, is most appropriate.
My concern would be that when people go to vote, say they want the roof done and the boiler done, but they don't want the three-story addition. It sounds like they're getting it and.
So, it's a great point, Maureen.
It's a great point.
It's a great point. Maureen, it's a great point in what Mr. Choi and I discussed earlier. So, I think what Diane's gonna share with the public in a few minutes is also what's gonna be shared on Tuesday night at the referendum meeting. What is going to be shared is exactly the projects. What costs are associated to each project, and again, the tax impact. Ultimately, yes, people wanna know what exactly is going to get fixed. And we've identified it, not we, but again, the professionals. And fortunately enough for this board and working here long enough, two different architectural firms have reviewed, not intentionally, have reviewed the scope of work. And the first group, who no longer is working with this Board of Education, came in with the same type of projects in excess of $88 million. The second group, who the board is working with now, Kretzschlgenist Architects, who we've met, are approximately at that 61 and change number. So, I will tell you, yes, the wording is critical, but also it's the understanding of what projects will be included. So, there will be a list, there will be itemized inventories of each building and what exactly will be addressed. No problem. Thank you.
Anyone else? Yes, ma'am?
I was gonna stand. Maria Pizantas, 216 East Harriet Avenue. I just have to once again mention, I think our district needs an addition. Our town is exploding, our schools are inundated, our class sizes are enormous. There is no way we can continue to Band-Aid fix, because to me, the first one is just a Band-Aid. We are going to be at this meeting again, asking the town once again when we could do this all at one time. And if anyone is truly going to tell me, and I understand my parents are seniors, they still live here, it may be difficult. But if we don't do something about our schools, the resales of the homes are going to drop because our school system and our school district is not up to par for the home values and the taxes we pay. It really isn't, and we all know that. And the building's not stopping because you can drive on any block, and there's another house with more children moving in. And this is about kids. I spend, I can tell you, more than $2 a day, because that's what it comes down to. And even if your home is worth more, you're making more, you can afford $4 a day. To say we can't spend $4 a day on our children, which I can tell you, that list for back to school was more than $4. And we all have it, I'm sure, and the ones who don't, we donate it. This town needs to do this for the kids. And I don't know anyone that is gonna vote to do it half-fast once again. It's absurd. I know that I would rather leave it the way it is if you're not going to add on because it is not gonna change my child's size. What is it gonna change? Kids don't notice paint on the walls and all that stuff. Band-aided with the money you have, why charge taxpayers 50 cents instead of a dollar or $2 when you could do it the right way and our kids could learn in a conducive environment? You have to do that. This is a, it's not, it's a no-brainer. I know many people who are parents, who are going to watch the YouTube, who agree with me. They cannot come because they work, because they're tucking their. They cannot come because they work, because they're tucking their kids into bed, because they're doing everything they can for their child to be happy the next day. We live in a technological world where they follow these board meetings, and they do, because I speak to them all. They're not going to vote for a Band-Aid. You're gonna get nothing. I'm telling you right now, you're not, I won't vote for it. And I'm a huge supporter of the school. But what are we doing? We're not doing anything for the kids. We're giving them a new boiler. Great. We should have done that forty years ago, fifty years ago.
Hey, thank you. Want to translate that?
Please. 어, 지금 이분 말씀이요. 어, 자기 부모님들 여기 다신데요. 꼭 모으시고. 근데 지금 어, 우리가 만약에 이천삼백만불짜리 플랜을 하시면 지금 있는 거에다 그냥 Band-Aids를 붙이는 것과 똑같다고 생각하신답니다. 왜냐? 여기에 지금 두 플렉스가 계속 올라가고 있고 타운은 지금 점점 사람들이 더 많이 오고 있고 학교에는 분명히 더 많은 학생들이 올 텐데 지금 사실은 계산을 다 해보면은 어, 두 플랜이 하나는 하루에 한 일불을 내는 거고 하나는 하루에 한 이불을 내는 거고. 그렇다 그러면 어, 사실 학교가 좋아져서 어, 학교에 어떤 요인이 올라가게 되냐면 일단 지금 뭐라고 생각하느냐면요. 여기 많은 타운의 미국 사람들은 삼천팔백만불은 그냥 우리가 여기 Band-Aids를 붙이는 거예요. 매일 Band-Aids를 붙이는 거다. 그러면 그건 그냥 고치는 거지 아무 다른 무슨 좋아지는 것도 아니고 그건 그런데 그냥 있는 거를 현상 유지만 하는 건데 이천만불을 더 드리면 그만큼 누러나는 건물이 있고 다 커지는 거니까 그게 사실 일개 볼 때는 어차피 돈을 우리가 올려서 내야 된다 그러면 그렇게 해선 전체가 다 좋아지는 게더 이득이다라고 한 플랜으로 가자 이렇게 지금 얘기를 하고 계신 거예요. 네, 왜냐하면은 집의 value가 분명히 훨씬 더 올라가는 거는 맞기 때문인 거죠.
Thank you. Okay, any other questions from the audience? Okay, if not, what I'd like to do is to go back to the resolution number five, approving the referendum question to be voted on on November fifth, two thousand nineteen. And, um, before we do that, any board members would like to comment?
I do have a question. So I understand that you represent all taxpayers in this town, and, um, it's difficult to make this decision, however, is there a way to, um, I know if we put up both options, both questions on the ballot, there can be some confusion, and it can cause, you know, votes to go a certain way, where votes fall, fail, correct?
Yep.
Is there a way to pose the questions in such a, a way that it's like a kind of a if, then?